Are we getting started now? Welcome, everybody.
Okay. At great notice that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Edinburgh Court Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Town to Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Office Team Minor Administrative Offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call. Mrs. Camerini, Mr. Cody, Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Mr. Donlin.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Stella.
Here.
Mrs. Wall.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here.
Okay. Now, we're going to our student speakers. We'll have High School South first, Julie Masella and Daniel Buckspahn.
Hello, everyone. My name is Danny Buckspahn. I'm with me is Julie Masella, who represents the Middletown High School South. So on October 10th, Middletown South misses the PSA team to all 10th and 11th grade students. While this took place, the 9th and 12th graders participated in a special team building and character education workshop. Our 12th grade and second leadership students gave powerful skills to the 9th grade students about stereotypes of struggles that may happen in our high school and ways they'll come out. Seniors in the guidance department have been very busy with the November 1st college application deadline. I can tell you what I am as well. Middletown South is still busy hosting the colleges from around the country for our seniors. We just had our very successful homecoming dance last Saturday, October 20th. We were very lucky. This was our great DJ, a lot of fun, very active students, and of course, enough to be profitable. So that's very happy as well. This week, students at Middletown High School South have been very busy with the new quarterly structure and at the end of the first market period. National Honor Society selection took place for the class of 2019, early March of October. On October 24th, Middletown South posted the 8th grade open house. Students and their families spent time touring the buildings and heard from other students and staff on academic and extra critical programs our school has to offer. The Fresh and For Day program will begin at Middletown High School South on November 26th.
Thank you. Thanks.
Hi. I'm Julie Masella. We've been very busy at Middletown South this past month. We're very excited that our Little Eagles preschool is officially back in action and all the students are loving every segment of teaching room. Our first, our very fun and interactive childhood cheer program where the cheerleaders work with special education students at one of our very own Middletown South games occurred last week, and all the cheerleaders, including myself, had an amazing time. Middletown South football has just concluded with their childhood football program as well. It was also very successful. Last week, we had our first pep rally of the season on the day of our homecoming game. This was very exciting because not only was the school spirit out of the Middletown heart, but we also involved many students in interactive activities between the grades. And we also brought out our homecoming court to be recognized. It was so much fun to watch and be a part of, and we are already looking forward to our next one coming up in November. Our favorite activity was the tug of war game where there were all the cheering and tugging with seniors left to fill it. At our homecoming game, we crowned our homecoming princes and princesses, and we're extremely lucky to have them ride around in traction chiefs, which we would like to thank Mr. Cooper Patrick for making as possible. We just concluded our annual Halloween holiday where children come to our school to take place in Halloween activities with our peer leaders. This was very successful, and all the kids looked great wearing costumes. On a sports standpoint, our very successful football team made the state playoffs. We had a very good season, finishing 6-2, and they are looking forward to taking on Northern Burlington at the Swamp this Friday for their first playoff game. In other sports, the boys soccer beat Hillsborough today in the first round of the state tournament. And the girls field hockey will be taking on high school North tomorrow in the semifinals of the state championship.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your first is South.
Okay. Now, we've got Adam and Heather.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and board. For the month of October, we have been fairly busy as a school. During the week of respect, we had a perfect stranger video. During the school violence awareness week, which was last week, we had a handshake challenge which we called the freshman transition classroom. And for gay straight alliance, we had a PSA and put up a bulletin board to promote diversity in our school. On October 5th, we had our homecoming dance. On October 16th, Kiko posted our first logo of the year. We collected 36 donations, which was well over projections that may not have allowed to be donated so early in the year. On October 20th, our Green House project flea marketing craft show raised $1,000 in additional funding for the Green House. On the 21st, we had a crop walk in Red Bank with Center for Leadership, which raised over $6,500. On the 22nd, we had our incoming freshman orientation. On the 24th, our green team unloaded four cubic yards of blue stone for the base of the Green House. On the 25th, our orange suede marching band performed the matrimony of the Prudential Center for the Devils and Predators, Devils versus Predators ice hockey game. On the 26th, we had our math honor society induction ceremony with 17 inductees. And tomorrow, we will be having our ribbon cutting for the new interactive math classroom at 8:45. Also tomorrow, we will be having our National Honor Society induction ceremony for senior inductees at 7:00 p.m. Staff, students, and parents are taking the New Jersey School Climate Survey this month for the school culture transformation project. We also entered division titles, boys cross country, and the girls soccer team. Additionally, for the girls soccer team, we entered the NJSIAA state tournament as the number one seed in Group 3 North Jersey, Section 2. Alliance are 17-1 and will host the 16th seed Woodbridge at home tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. Our soccer team won the D-North Division of the Short Conference, which was the first time we have done so in 11 years. The girls also advanced to the Short Conference semifinals, where they lost 2-1 to Townsend North, who went on to win the tournament. In 17 wins of the season, the girls have earned eight shutouts, scored 61 goals, and only gave up 12 goals. In addition to the team's success on the field, the Middletown North girls soccer team was selected as this year's Short Conference Soccer officials on the county girls sportsmanship award recipients. That is a very long title. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. Is Kelly here?
No, she's not.
Okay. Okay. I need a resolution to go into closed session for matters of student matters, negotiations, and personnel.
Sorry.
All favor. I propose. At great notice that this meeting was provided by sending such notice to the Edinburgh Court Press, the Middletown Patch, and the Middletown Town to Public School District website, and the posting of such notice at the Office Team Minor Administrative Offices in each elementary, middle, and secondary school in the district. Roll call. Mrs. Camerini, Mr. Cody, Mr. DeFranco.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Little.
Here.
Mrs. Wall.
Here.
Mrs. Rogers.
Here.
I'd like to stand for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence for Elizabeth Deggan, E.D., passed away on October 13, 2018. Dr. Deggan worked in the district as a school psychologist from 1970 until her retirement in 1989. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God, in the resolve of liberty, justice, and all. Thank you.
Okay. Scarlett, I'm asking you to pass an internship to Google, yes, sir. Mr. Suriak can set the table.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Thank you, sir. So I would appreciate you being around for this. Um, it's not a pleasure to be here and to give a great tour of Google, but it's, um, Google pretty much shows their culture and, um, basically everything that it's cool within the city. Uh, the day consisted of a presentation by Google about their philosophy, about their culture, about their diversity. Um, then included a Q and A with current Googleers, which is pretty interesting, followed by a tour of their workspaces, which is even more interesting. Um, our contact at Google, Peter Logley, created a great, amazing learning experience for us, um, provided us with his presentation and then gave our students free bring more or less of Google any question. Google would not pay this very much for technology or education or anything. Um, I have this presented here. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, obviously. I'm going to hit a couple slides up just so kind of understand, get some understanding of what our students saw. Um, I have a few pictures to share and then we're going to hand it over. So it's hard to see. This first picture is of the current Google data center, and the only, the important slide is I will show you later on why. So they saw a Google's mission statement, which is to organize the world's information and make it universally accessible and useful. Basically, what does that mean? Harvest data and make it accessible to everyone. So if you look at any product Google has created or any application, it all fits on this mass umbrella of making data useful and, uh, valuable for everyone. Interesting note they brought up that in two years, uh, we've created more data than previous 5,000 years dramatic, which when I find, when I find clicking, my mind load and it was pretty hard to handle. Uh, another fact that it provided with us was Google predicts that by 2025, we will gain 160 zettabytes of data, uh, per year. A zettabyte is 120 gigabytes. So right now, we're really guessing, I'm not quite remember my mind now, but look at the previous slides, you realize that's the direction we're going. Uh, Google's philosophy is share. Share, 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 and compare. They encourage sharing amongst peers, amongst other businesses, amongst, uh, other departments. Um, they also create collaborative spaces for us, and you'll see some of their collaborative spaces. Basically, they don't want anybody to be part of a work on a project, they want everybody having ability to work on a project. Two rules or two questions each project, what answer must answer. Is it relevant and is it useful? And it does not have to be relevant today, it can be relevant in future, but in order for a project to succeed at Google, you have to answer the question, is this project useful to anyone out there and does it have any relevance? If the answer is yes, yes, we move forward with the project. Um, and then also the final thing is innovation comes from anywhere. For example, uh, Google R-Board, which is now Google VR, Virtual Reality, started with a passion project among our employees. Basically, this employee has the idea of, of virtual reality, glass, uh, smartphone. They worked on it as a passion project, and then a few years later, it got pushed off the chain and ended up being an actual Google product. What's interesting about all these sort of philosophies I just mentioned, they're all things we're actually doing within our classrooms now in Middletown. Uh, we, if we're trying to build collaborative workspaces, um, we're offering 20% passion projects to our students, um, and we're having students share across, uh, across departments, across buildings. So this philosophy that's been driving Google is also helping us drive our educational experience here in Middletown. Really quick, I mentioned one is still in the future, and the top skills probably some 31%, but we all kind of knew that, uh, so CNN graph, the percentage, the amount of percentages kind of mine were a little low. Here's a fact that kind of left us all to go about. They're, they're predicting that by 2020, what, 12 years from now, there'll be 1.4 million computer science jobs available in the United States and only 1,000 U.S. grads will develop. That's exactly what we had thought, and, uh, our students kind of felt the same way. So during our experience, I, um, I and the rest of our chaperones tried to share as much as we were allowed to share via Twitter and social media. So I have some of those images for those who didn't see them. I also have a few others. Here are interns at Google. That's the downstairs in the lobby. That's where we're still getting check-ins, which we told them we were, uh, toward Charlie in Chocolate Factory. They're very excited to start a chaperone this morning. It's an obvious sign we got to get a picture of this. Um, here are interns working for current Googleers. Uh, the Googleers basically sat there and answered any questions we offered them, whether it was about Google, whether it was about work experience, um, but they answered anything we asked them, and they stood there, just sat there as long as we wanted them to. Um, here's the Q and A continued through the workspace. Here's just the workspace area we're at, and I think that is Peter Logley, who are, um, so I guess our field provider, he was the one who, uh, continued the Q and A with us. Here he is again, working with our, our interns, um, just one of the hallways as we were walking through the workspace. We got to get a picture of the Google scooters, and then we also had to get the Google experience, so we had to. No students rode to students for safety reasons, we made sure that the chaperones did. There's another picture of a common space, uh, it's a cat bag with people with their Chromebooks or laptops and working on different things. This picture's hard to see, but I wanted to include it because it was pretty interesting. On the far right is a picture of a Google developer, and he lets what was on the board. Um, as you see, our interns are looking through a glass door. Beyond that door is the original Google data center, the arrays that help with data storage. This whole data center was built in a cargo box, container box. If you remember that picture I showed you earlier about data center, it shows you how far Google has, or technology has come in those years. But it was pretty interesting that he took this data center, this cargo container, and brought it to New York City and put it on whatever, uh, floor. It's a Google at heart at work. It's a chaperone at work. And then here are interns touring a little outside of the porch, it was an overcast day, so we were able to get outside to kind of get a break for a little while. So you've heard enough about me, interns, and Google, and everything else. I think we need to hand it over to our interns, let them answer the questions we have. Come guys.
I guess Rob asked one of the first questions, so I'd like to know what the most impressive thing you came away with?
From the Google experience or the other? So from the Google experience, personally, I'd say that the most impressive thing that I kind of walked away with was that Google themselves don't really care what skillset they have coming in. They more care about your personality, what you have, and who you are as a person, how you grow, how you grew with your past experiences, and how you're going to grow with the new ones. And they really wanted to make sure that, like, you're the kind of person who adapts, that learns, that really changes up when change needed, instead of somebody who already has skills. So like, for me personally, it was like walking away with the knowledge of like, really anyone can make it in like the tech world, but you just kind of have to have the right mindset to, you know, maybe the tech skills when you first start into it.
Anything else funny after that?
I don't know. Sorry, kid.
Well, I thought, I thought that the Google headquarters, like in general, the building was really a unique workplace I've never seen before. They have like micro kitchens in every section and like seating that like you would never think would be in a workplace, and it was really interesting to see that and see them hard at work still.
Any else?
Just seeing the work ethic, work ethic they had there was interesting, because they get their employees like so much credit for their company, and the same time, it's so much amazing creations and stuff, though, they could work on their own passion projects, but it's still a little, introduce some of the incredible things, even though it's so laid back in terms of most of their companies.
Any else?
Yeah, I just had a question. Everybody knows Google, everybody uses Google products and software and everything, so you have familiarity. I already, you know, through the Board of Education, but, so you went in with some expectations, I'm sure you knew it was going to be cool and different, but was there something that just far exceeded your expectations, kind of blew your mind a little bit when you got there?
The architecture of the building was very impressive, blew my mind immediately. Uh, it is the way they present the building, the way they lay everything out. Every little detail is intentional, and every little detail you're going to have, you're, is going to catch your eye, and it's all intentional, it's all there for a specific reason. And our guy, Peter, actually outlined those reasons. For example, there was a part of the building where you saw a bunch of lines kind of going down on the wall, and they're all different color. And I, I compared that, I was like, yeah, it's a really cool design, you know, who thought of that? And it wasn't really a design, it was how it was aligned, and then in small print, that location of the world and that liner was the amount of percentage of, um, computer science that they have developed. And it was meant to give people in that area an idea, maybe throw that in their mind, like, for example, you know, parts of the east are less developed, parts of the west, you know, like, give these people kind of a small mini fact as you're walking around, like, every little aspect, every little thing in the building had an aspect like that, and it was breathtaking to like see that in work.
Got a question. Uh, meaning that nationally, there's a real push, this is for the young women, there's a big push nationally for young women to get involved in the sciences, especially computer science. Did you come away from this experience seeing a lot of women there or feeling like it was a woman-friendly environment, or something that you could consider, a field you might consider going into?
Uh, I'd definitely say so. When we had the Q and A, there was, um, a girl there, or two girls, and it was just like, it's honestly, it's not really, I didn't see any like gender differences, like there might have been, but I really didn't notice it because that's not what they care about. Like, they just care about, like what Rob said, like the work ethic, like, and just like, good people, basically.
It's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I, uh, but, but, but I also didn't really see any, uh, ethnic inequalities when it came to gender, you know, like, like as, uh, and then as Mary said, there was, there was, um, like two, two female panelists out of like the four people, so that was like really cool to see. And, 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 and also that, that anybody could, could, uh, could make it into Google. Like, one of the panelists even said that, uh, that, that there were like some, uh, some like New York City actors that got jobs at Google, so, so, so you don't think, I, I mean, I mean, that really just shows you that it, that, that it is possible, that you can remind you, so.
Why didn't you think you'd work at Google one day?
Probably have not.
Have any of you had the opportunity to work on passion projects as part of your
school work, and did you think of that at all when you saw the work that they were doing?
I would say that in some classes, you definitely have a lot of work freedom with the work that you did in others. Uh, I guess, for example, my, uh, look correlated that we just did was, I guess you'd say a passion project, because it was just writing a narrative, and it was pretty much all coming from you, you had to follow a specific guideline, but it was very loose. I guess that could be considered a passion project. I'd say, um, in sight, we had to do a project of our own creation, so like in some classes, there are situations where we are given the tools and given, given the trust from our teacher to go ahead and move forward with ideas and projects that we want to pursue for ourselves and for like things that we're interested in, which I think is very beneficial because it can prove that, you know, students who otherwise would not work as hard might put their mind to something that they actually enjoy.
Were you able to see any interaction with other Google employees from around the world on some of these projects, where you might have sat, sat with a few of them, they were working on a project, so they were interacting, you know, somebody in arms, great, great, happened.
I don't know. Yeah, we didn't really, really like, yeah, we, uh, we, we didn't really like see, um, like different, different like ethnic groups there, but, but, you know, I'm sure, uh, you know, like, like, obviously, like, you didn't really get to like see, see like every part of, of Google, but, 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 you, but, you know, I'm, I'm sure that, um, that, 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 yeah, that like, I, I, I mean, like, like from, from what I can tell, Google seems like a very diverse place.
I know, like, um, that people have their passion projects, and they start, some of them, they start taking off, I know they have the one thing, it's the directing internet from air, how air balloons roam, roam, roam the world, but that was some of the passion that went to the vault. They started bringing people from other parts of the world, other Google, uh, bosses, I guess, and have them contribute to the project wherever they may be.
So, um, you were all about the summer internships in the district. How would you relate this experience to what you were doing with this summer internship? I have a second point to that question, but let's not get that first.
Are you asking like how would you relate the Google interns, like what we saw of Google to our internship here?
Uh, the, the, the work that you did during the summer, do you think that potentially that work could give you, uh, experience to move in this direction or go?
A hundred percent. I mean, like, uh, personally, uh, when I first did it last year, there were some aspects of it that like I already, I already knew, but when you move forward and you do, you start going to projects that are required, that you know, it's not necessarily done before, maybe it was interesting. And you start working with people, like this year, we worked with 200 classmates who had very different select, select skills, and there was this, uh, kid who, he was not able to make a breakthrough. He taught me how to fix certain types of hardware issues off from us that I had never done before. So in that instance, you know, he taught me like team building, being able to work with other people, like peers, not just my superiors, but also being able to fix certain hardware issues that I'd never encountered before. And that was one small instance. There was like numerous occasions of that, not just from the peers, but from the supervisors like Dave as well, who showed us how different things work, how the core interacts with the system, how one small cut of wire can like bring a whole system down and cause chaos or a dead. Like, he, there was a lot of things to be learned, and there was definitely some experience to be gained from it. And I know personally speaking, like, I definitely gained valuable experience, not just IT skills, but team building, being able to work with a group, being able to lead certain projects, and being able to complete a goal with a certain amount of time, wouldn't give it freedom, because it truly was like superiors saying, this needs to be done, you know what to do, and get it done. It was, it was like, you know, there was very little handholding, it was mostly just we had a responsibility to do, and we did it. And that, that's a very good skill to get, because a lot of people, you know, they struggle, some people struggle with trying to get work done without putting their hand up.
Right. Other, other thoughts?
Well, uh, well, 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 my, my part of the internship, like specifically, that I did with Mr. Alston was, um, was, was, was like making, um, or like, yeah, like helping make the, uh, the new, uh, district website. So, 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 you know, I, I definitely had like a lot of experience dealing like with some of like the HGO, and then like the backend side of things, and, uh, and then specifically with like a software company, you know, like, they were, like, they were even saying that, um, that, that it recommended, um, like, that, uh, that, 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 like, when you go to interview, that, that, that like you've at least like touched Google before, like, that you, that you've like seen it and like interacted with it. And, um, and then, and, and, and like right, right now, actually, I'm, I'm taking like intro to computer science as an elective, so, so, yeah, yeah, like, I think, uh, like the internship, as well as my, uh, as well as my high school level classes, would, uh, would help me pursue a, a career, because, you know, I'm, I'm light on a code, so.
Great. Great. So. Any else?
Is there anything you guys experienced there that you would take and put into a new, um, passion project, that you get inspired by it?
Again, just like the work that they had there was, was like, you know, they were working on something that was, they felt was important, and how they could then apply it to their job, and actually do something with it, so they all, like one of the, um, people on the panel asked us what our own projects, like what we were working on here at our, and a lot of us, you know, that whole, we really followed. They, they took a piece of interest in what we were doing, and thought it was like, you know, because we had inspiration for our own projects, and things we can apply to our, like, to a career in the future, which is kind of like they do there with their own projects. Kind of like inspiration for us, but also drops in what they do there.
So I have a question, Matt, about, talking about our summer internships, you know, we're looking to expand them throughout the course of the year. So based on your experiences that you've had with the internships, what advice do you have with us, and what would you do for us when we go on the internship for students?
I'd say that it definitely has come a long way since its initial years last year. I think having four interns was, uh, definitely a good call, but at the same time, you know, you got to be careful with that, because you don't want too many people, because then it gets a little crowded and it starts to feel detrimental. I'd say it's a little bit of a complicated question, because there's like so many different aspects to it, and... aspects to it, and there's different projects, I know that there were two separate, two different main projects, and my part of the main project was like split up, and we were separated at certain times, it, it's all about being able to kind of talk to the head supervisors at like each school, like Howard and Steve, and then also just talk with the head of the district, Dave, and just see their feedback on what they need, because it all boils down to what Dave needs goes to what they need, and what they need comes to us, and it's just like that, it follows that flow. So, for me, it's more of like, when I get there, I know what I'm going to be having to do for like that week, but other than that, it's very um, very high level, so like, it would all come from asking, instead of us like asking more of the, uh, Dave, more of the head supervisors, because they're more, they have like, you know, more experience, they really know like what things need to be done, what projects need to be done, and for us, we're more of like kind of tagging along and getting experience of really figuring out along with them, like how it was the most efficient way, and being able to make good solutions for that. I'd say that the technical issue was definitely a success for the year that we did it, and I'd say that if there was like something during the year, or just like a longer time period, that would definitely be a great improvement, because I feel that for the amount of information you gain, just that short amount of time, it could definitely be much greater improvement if it was spread out longer, because then, you know, you have these internships that are, these interns that actually grow with the projects as well, become more experienced, and as time goes on, you take someone as a freshman, by the time he's a senior, he can be supervised in freshman, and it's, you know, then he starts to manage those skills, and that obviously does pretty much into the future, but it is like a feasible thing, you can really think of it as, instead of a summer project, you can expand that and has to be much greater than was right now.
Great feedback.
Other thoughts, final thoughts for you guys?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Just so you know, for us as volunteers, this is really, makes us realize why we do what we do, because when you guys have experience, it's always incredible this year, it makes us feel good to be a part of it, so thank you for everything you've done.
Will you leave the white?
District has your certificate for these students, I know Mr. Sidewell wanted to commend them and, and recognize them, Julian Milton. Robert DiAsio. Mary McMullin. Cade Riegler. And Tyler Guthur.
Team picture with the board in the front, you got it?
Got it.
It's from the Gally Milton, 41th and Avenue, I'm not so far back as well. To represent the Middletown Press of diverse learners, and we are a special education advisory district. My comments tonight are regarding the integrated kindergarten program, and my co-chair and I wrote a letter, because we realized that-
Excuse me, ma'am, sorry to interrupt you, this public portion is for agenda items, so this issue is not on the agenda, there'll be a separate section later on in the meeting for the House of General Public.
So I saw that there is a vote on facilities for the integrated classroom. What about the facilities?
The agenda item is the approval of submission of the use of the classroom, that doesn't have facilities in the classroom, that's landmarked.
So-
So if your question's about facilities related to this program, go ahead, you have three minutes, it is about the program overall, in respect, you have to wait until the second session.
Until the end of the meeting?
Until the portion begins to happen.
Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anderson Davis, elementary. Um, I just wanted to um, make a comment on, I noticed there were some changes to the agenda, the usual best changes, but also with some of the things that were on the last week, um, there were items that were not made as attachments, so I was wondering if at some point they could be posted to the website, like the, the comprehensive maintenance plan for 2000, for this year, with regard to the, because it says, you know, it's the maintenance, the required maintenance activities pre to public schools, just so that the public can be aware of what's happening over the course of this school year. Um, the district nearest to the services plan for this year wasn't, I couldn't find that on the website as well, um, and then, okay, and then the other comment I had was about the, I noticed that the organizational chart has been amended a few times over the past couple of agendas, I would just be, it would be great if someone could kind of throw it out there and make it clear why it's changing, I don't have a problem with the fact that it's changing, but it's kind of hard to figure out where the changes are happening, because it all looks very similar, so to understand where those changes are happening and why, that would be really great, so people can understand. Uh, and then the last part was with there, I noticed there's another professional services agreement for Dr. Nelson, um, in addition to the, the change of doctor for the school physicals and home instruction, and it would be great if at some point either administration or the board could explain how the, the change to the original doctor's contract, how these changes are going to affect the budget, since the budget is tight, because these numbers seem a little bit high, I know the rate per hour for the first doctor change is higher than the original doctor, and now the orthopedic doctor, I, they didn't even show that amount on the list, doctor's contract, so just in terms of, you know, the bottom line of the budget, since it's tight, that would be great. Um, and then a comment about the parent organization fundraising, if you guys haven't talked about that, that would be great, but it isn't on the agenda tonight, the Form 95, the policy.
I think you said that was going to be on our workshop. On that workshop, our facilities form.
Tonight, next one. Okay, just because I noticed that-
So just to be fair, it's not on the, tonight's agenda, it's what's open.
Right, that's fine, that's fine, but it's a workshop agenda for November, when I left, I looked, it's only a board agenda for November. Okay, so, okay, so that's when you're bringing up, all one person. All right, thank you. Thanks.
Hi, Bureau of Safety. Bureau of Safety, 22 Ashard Drive, Middletown. I wanted to take a quick minute to, I see John Parcells is on the agenda to retire, and I'd like to take a quick minute to thank him for this, I won't page him, but I'm adding here, it looks like almost 40 years of service, um, and in a time where people kind of discount people that have been around a long time, he is adding an incredible amount of value. Um, I had the privilege of being on an elementary ad hoc facility committee with him, I don't want to age myself, but I'm in 10 years now, and after being on finance committees for years, I'd never even heard of this John Parcells, this administration, um, and his wealth of knowledge and his ability to see what's working at one school and help other schools solve that problem, bring things together, I just personally wanted to take a moment to um, thank him for his service, and um, and he will be missed, so I'm gonna leave now. Um, and then, there was not a printout of the agenda, so I apologize, I don't have the reference, but as it relates to the organization chart, I know I've spoken to you about this role with Dr. George, um, in a time where we're all embracing conclusion, um, having special ed and not report through curriculum, or have a heavy reporting line through curriculum, um, is troublesome to me, my child is included in general ed, and I feel like she has no home principal diverse special ed, when you talk about online curriculum, it's very difficult, um, so I would just encourage looking at that process, when I look at, and it's no offense to anybody who has to be faculty or assistant superintendents across the board, but for somebody that has a special ed child, to see it reporting through kind of eight facilities, and it's, it's almost rare re-putting them versus how we educate them, because I focus, for my child, it's all about curriculum, but for your org chart, she falls under special ed, which falls under basically kind of the facilities and the ad hoc areas, so I would just like you all to think about that as you keep revising this, and I know you have dotted lines, or you have weekly meetings, but it's, it's not the same thing, the talent that I put into that curriculum group, I have no access to for my child, so, um, you know, whether it's the principals or whatever, but everything that goes through the I E K, I, we have to sit with special ed and it's dictated through that, so if you can, we have had a conversation, there's still a change, um, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sue Griffin, one of our group, I have a question about the New York Steinberg School of Cultural Education meeting, can you just tell me a little bit more about this program, and whether it's for students or the staff, I'm sure you'll get to it later on, but I was honored to have the conversation.
Is that the, um, the research, that, that is a for student teaching?
Yes.
We have a candidate from that school who's seeking student teaching, please place your for student teaching.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
No one else at the mic, we're gonna close the mic on public comments on agenda items on, I need a motion to approve the minutes for executive subject for 9/26, and the regular voting needs up 9/26. Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Under the report of the president, we need to accept the code of ethics for board members. Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Under the report of the business administrator, I need a motion for number one through four. Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Under the report of the superintendent, I need a motion for number one through nine. Second, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, I'll post on number one. Okay, number 10 is the superintendent's update.
So I, this week, members of board and I were, had the opportunity, actually, the honor to attend, school boards, and our district was recognized for the highest level of future-ready certification. The internship program that you heard here tonight, and the work of the student, and the emphasis on the curriculum and personalized learning, student-directed learning, making sure that we are really using educational technological opportunities for the betterment of our curriculum, and really more, and a more purposeful, authentic way for workplace readiness skills is an example of where the district is. There were only 35 schools in the entire state of New Jersey that received that highest level, there were three districts that got district-wide certification, and Middletown represented 17 of 35 schools. In addition, the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Repellet, mentioned Middletown in his keynote address as being a district that was in the forefront of educational innovation, so I commend the work of the board, I'm grateful to the board for their support, I commend the work of our teachers, our support staff, our building-level administration, our central office administration, and our curricular team for this work, I can tell you, as chief school administrator, I was very proud of that distinction this weekend, I'm grateful for everybody at this table, and everyone that works in this district that we were able to attain that, and for us, there's a lot of evidence that's involved in this certification process, as a matter of fact, President Obama originally started on the federal level, the future-ready pledge, and it was all about making sure that as educational technology came online, that it was going to be about more than assessment, and it was really going to be used very purposefully as part of our daily education, to make sure that we were giving our students the workplace readiness skills to create and innovate, as we say in Middletown, and we presented for the state, we presented many times as an administrative team on future-ready, and for us, it's not about the technology, it's about the delivery of best practice instruction. So, the evidence-based process that separates New Jersey's future-ready certification, it's not just the pledge, you have to, under all the indicators, leadership, curriculum, best business practice, what we're doing, not only with hardware, with software, to implement best practice teaching and learning, but what we're doing on the backside, making sure we have the infrastructure in place to really be able to deliver that instruction. Where we've come in the seven years that I've been here, thanks to the support of the board, the work of our staff, is really nothing short of miraculous, and it gets us to a place where we're 17 out of 35, recognized in the entire state, so I just want to say thank you to the board, thank you for everything you've done.
And as far as superintendents, I think Dr. George had asked me to just update the board, that Dr. Jordan, our chief of education, ready on Friday on our state aid application to cover the state, and our state aid, under the title of emergency aid for the current school year, the $1,177,000 we had applied for, the application was denied, they had a list of reasons why they were denying it, which included items such as district has bank half available, district has maintenance reserve, have the district typically- district typically has a small surplus, and so these types of items are the things that they listed for why the aid was not instated. I did send out a email to other business administrators in districts I knew that also had any aid such as Brick, River, Eaton Town, Town Hall, Bridge Township, and all those applications were denied as well. So I just wanted to.
It almost sounds like what they're telling us is we have to tax the taxpayers to the highest amount before they'll even consider giving us any more speeding. Okay, I need a motion on number 12 for A1 and B1.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion for number 2 through 9.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion for letter C through E.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. I need a motion for finance, number 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I had a question about, we had asked Amy a while back, and I don't know if anybody ever had that to us, maybe I've visited. Did we ever find out why Christian Brothers gets $50,000 in books, which is almost, is double or even worth of double than some of the other private schools?
I don't have the answer on that yet. I'm still trying to navigate.
And again, those ones, that's correct.
They're past the costs, yes.
That's a good point, but also one thing that I did that last time, I wanted to say that CBA is the biggest of the, numbers-wise, the biggest score and certainly most of the stands.
I remember St. Leonard's is a great, they're great since then. And CBA is bigger, it just has.
My assumption, I don't, I don't, I think that is one possible answer. Normally, there's a pew per pupil. Now, another thing that I would say is textbooks on the secondary level are more expensive, you know, like a capitalist textbook has a more, um...
I would say I didn't believe CBA is, I think it is.
So is based on specific general numbers, pay, based on restude.
Well, that's, that's.
That is, that is.
St. Leonard's is probably gets a larger application than elementary. Because even in our own state aid application, that's much more meaningful than elementary. So that also makes sense. But we will work on getting some other.
I know it is for us, you know, not to mention, and oftentimes now with textbooks, it's not just the cost of the textbooks, like for math classes, the software that goes along with it, and the online, it's not just the textbook now, for textbook.
Yeah, this was the obvious, I think this was the obvious, that central office one, I thought myself, so it just does seem, you know, CBA is a little disproportionate to modern day, especially just kind of low-cost schools and stuff like that.
We'll continue investigating.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, I need a motion for student activities, 1 through 3.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Active standard number 2.
Do we have any updates on negotiations?
I haven't heard of them.
Under personnel, we need a motion for number 1 through 17, the addendum 1 through 9, and number 14 on the addendum.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. I would, I would like to add to what Vera said before about John Parcells. I've been here a long time, I've worked with John Parcells even before I was on the board as PTA. And John is incredible, he is Mr. Middletown. He knows every inch of every building in this district and every ground. Without him, I don't know where we would be today. Every time there's an issue, John knows, he knows where it is, how to find it, recommendations on how to fix it. He has guided this district all the way in a positive manner. And he is truly one person that I think we are going to have a very hard time replacing. He has big shoes to fill, and he has always put Middletown first, our schools and our students, always the safety of our students. So I would like to thank him for all his years of service. And Mr. Gannon is here, he's going to be voted on for our assistant principal at Bayshore. If there's no more, if there's more here, by now I'm sure everything's going to be fine. If there's no other discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. I'm abstaining on number 16 on the regular agenda. Okay, old business.
I just wanted to do a quick follow-up on shared services, you know, what is our follow-up on shared services in general? We had a meeting scheduled for November 1st, so this week, with the township to discuss shared services. However, we were notified today, the township, it was supposed to be 7:00, or 6:00. We were notified today that the township requested a reschedule at 4:00 p.m., which is not acceptable, it's during this work, this department work. So right now, unless any of us learned anything, many times, we do not have a shared services meeting on the schedule, hopefully the township can use that later to another time.
The response I received was that Mr. Hargis wanted to check with, and then to see whether they could, um, need a five or six. I have the last they emailed back long.
Right. Hopefully they can provide their, kind of, before it's moved. The other thing with shared services is that there is currently a meeting on the calendar for November 13th, as we do do second Monday, so November 13th is Veterans Day. And so I believe the township.
November 12th.
November 12th, sorry. So I believe the township, we have to work with them to get the revised date. Has there been any conversation with Christian Brothers Township yet?
Not on that meeting, it must be the focusing on scheduling this November 1st.
Schools are open on November 12th.
Right.
Sunday, you're on, that'd be awesome.
The town is closed.
The town is closed.
So what are the big items against the shared services?
Off the top of my head, we expect them to provide us a proposal for the renovation of two fields at W D O L better. We also had a little docket conversation about school security and possible shared services placed by officers. That's a pilot permit we've explored with them. There's a discussion about fees that the township charges us as surcharge to rental or the overtime payment of police officers and events. And we've got discussion or revisiting the use of board education facilities as polling places, again, as related to school security. So we've got a few things on that.
Are we seeing a follow-up for the field, potential field at Thorn?
The potential field at Thorn was raised four months ago as part of a review of sort of the give and take on the shared service permitting arrangement in general. What they told us was that in their estimation, the field at Thorn, turf fields in there that we have next to Nutswall, is not feasible within their budget due to the high water table, but no follow-up was given and no placement from Thorn.
Just so you know, when we had originally done this two years ago, we knew that we could do a turf field there. So the discussion turned to putting the field a little bit closer to Harmony away from the landlands, and that it would be a grass field. And because it wasn't going to be a turf field, it would also have, I'm trying to think what it's actually called, a concession stand slash rest station.
Like a little hut.
There was a word for it, but I'm not going to think of it. But it was a concession stand that had restrooms, just to kind of balance out the fact that we weren't getting a turf field. So if you could just follow up, I think that's something.
Just to give context, I think it's important for me to come. So when we, we have some great work with the township, with the constables. We have the Nutswall field, not only, and the lakes that have gone on the Nutswall field, and during the day, those are used all day long by the school system. And we were having those discussions, Danielle, that was before the Croydon Paul field that is used all day long and after school by athletic facilities.
It wasn't before, it was before.
That's all part of the same conversation.
Not before it was finished, though. I think the point that they were making was that they were trying to give us a field, work with us for a field for each male school. So Croydon was kind of the one that went with Bayshore, Nutswall, Thompson, and then we were going to work on something for Thorn. The point was, again.
The problem with Thorn, every step away, yeah, the thought of the Thorn field was when we were hoping we were going to be able to take dirt from the Croydon field as it was being removed and place that dirt at Thorn, but we were not able to do that. So, you know, I just, I'll look that up. I mean, and the thought of collaboratively moving forward in good spirit, you know, I, I come out, I look out the window at Bayshore every day, and I see the Middletown order, football field, a football team out on that field in Croydon, that was only made possible by this ongoing shared service work that we've done. Yes, I would think, Danielle, absolutely pointing out that there's, if there's more work to be done, a place that we have to focus on is that Thorn field, and I completely respect and understand why you're saying that, but I mean, we're, we're kind of summarizing a lot of conversations through a lot of years, so we have to be careful.
I think the conversation should take place, though. I don't think we should try.
I don't want you to mistake it for a criticism, it was a conversation that was had in the shared services meeting, and they told us that they were going to work on those fields.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that as a criticism.
I wasn't criticizing our work with the township, but I think it's great that they worked on those fields.
And I'm not criticizing you, I'm giving.
I still want to see Thorn being left behind.
I'm just giving the general public a little bit more information that is not, not, not everybody was scared that topic.
And there's definitely a commitment amongst the shared, the current, the shared services to bring that up, because it was discussed that it was what, they originally talked about that field several months ago.
That is, that suggests that this is a committee-based discussion, which is exemplary. Exactly. And since some of the discussion that we're talking about, getting into the updates rate, with some of the terms and conditions of back for negotiations, with the comp mention, and persons who also have suggested we stay away from giving answers specifically once in responses in this form, in a closed session, we can do that.
I had another question, but I, our fields in general, I apologize, does the Lindcroft play football part of these shares or is it where they're going to be next year? Is that, is that your part?
So the way it works is that we provide facilities, fields to township. The township handles the permitting. So any, you know, the dispute with the Lindcroft play football came up because we had two, three fewer fields to offer this year because we're being Thompson. And so that resulted, and then that provided.
Is next year going to be issue two, or is that?
I think that's something that we'll have to discuss once we.
The rest rush.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's not a shared services topic.
No, we're going to keep it fresh.
That's all, I'm just asking, is it shared services?
The shared, the shared service, the shared service part of that would be us working with Mrs. Della to provide her the list of fields that are built. You know, and then she works with.
I just want to say that too, that the township rotates their fields, and we're going to have a constant need to rotate our fields. And so that, you know, that's going to be an ongoing collaboration. I know, not just in shared service, and I don't want to speak for the board, but in the time that I've been here, there's no, we are, our 17 schools, the spirit of our board, in the time that I've been here, has always been that these schools do not just belong to the board of education, or just belong to the number of students they're sent to, but they belong to our community and our residents. And I'm speaking for current members, too. I know that our emphasis has been, and will continue to be, to make sure that we work with our community, whether it be Girl Scouts, or Boy Scouts, or PFA meetings, or after-school events, or before care, after care, tutorial work, to make sure that, that these facilities are available for our school community. And we have students all year round playing basketball, and soccer, and the board, as always, and other sports, I don't want to just mention those, just off the top of my head. And many other activities are available to our community and the board, and that's always been the position of the board. I know that's the position of the current board, and we're going to continue to do that. But when it comes to a rotation of field, I, I just think we need to say that there's always going to be a rotation, there's going to have to be a rotation to maintain the health of those fields, just like there's a rotation.
My question is, is it more to shared services? Is that going to be handled? Darren?
It's an administrative responsibility.
And you brought up a couple of other things. YMCA, I didn't talk about that a lot, I don't know, is that being emailed? How's it looking in terms of, I don't know, all the schools sort of straightened out? There's capacity issues and personnel issues.
Fort Bonne, I think, is going to have their own now?
Are they being positive?
That's correct.
There's any change we should know about, are any schools having particular issues with it before ever?
Well, we're just looking to build capacity and to take the students that are on the waiting list offline, and the two biggest waiting lists, Harmony is one of the biggest waiting lists. So the opening of Fort Bonne is one way we're addressing it. Another way we're addressing that that's been our intention all along is to open up, or to expand the rooms that the before and after care are using. So the primary space is that open space, we're expanding into other areas so that we can apply for more students to be able to take advantage at Harmony School. And most specifically, that's our strategy for Lindcroft, not Lindcroft, I'm sorry, Nutswall. Nutswall is the next biggest, and probably Lindcroft after that. So to increase our capacity and to try to take all students off the waiting list and to expand on the numbers that we can provide in the future, that's one of our strategies.
That's the third one.
Yes. The Y continues, the Y continues to, to address those issues. To the best of my knowledge, staff's in place to, or the staff is in the process of being put in place so that we can expand to, and the numbers are full of expanding, and they were sharing with Harmony, so now we're just going to have to, which opens up additional spaces at.
I think you're right, one of the biggest problems was they were having a hard time finding help, too. And I think the district has advertised for them, they've advertised, and I know every time I run into somebody that says they're looking for something, I always recommend, you know, that YMCA is looking, the food service department is looking, you know, it seems like there's not as many people looking for work, yeah.
The other question I had was, in general, I'd understand from our athletic department, how freshmen in football, for example, is monitored? How do the green lines, is it, hey, so is there some questions about concussion protocols? And freshmen, usually the freshman units are separated, and questions about follow-up on various concussion situations. So let's understand, one, what are concussion protocols on? And two, how are the freshman teams, how are they monitored in terms of, by the head coach, for example? The JV is usually created in the fourth team, and then you have the freshman team. The JV is usually created in the fourth team, and then you have the freshman team. And the state environment, there's a lot of sensitivity to that. If someone's involved in the football, trying to encourage people to stay or to continue to learn, you know, the next step before you get to the high school, that freshman year where they collect kids who played, youth, and so I'd like to understand, one, how that management structure works, and two, in general, how concussion protocols pop, how it follows.
So the first, that's a building level issue that you build through the building level of registration in coordination with the athletic director. But the principles on any issues as they relate to go over here would be the first point of report. And if there was a concern, meaning would be set up between that person and the athletic director. As far as anything medical, concussion protocols are handled directly by the trainers and reporting from the coaches to the trainers. And then from there, we would want medical expertise and doctors.
So spreads for principles and Mr. Carroll?
Yes. To address the question in the chamber of command, yes.
One of the things to mention a few times, but vocational programs, I've heard that a few times. How will we approach that? You know, we were talking about it a couple of years ago, introductions with those schools. How will we, is this going to be part of the strategic plan?
I think that's kind of financial for us right now, but yeah, I would hope that that would be included in, in the vision of the district through the strategic plan.
Is that what we're going to, as I was talking about?
We haven't really discussed it as a board because we don't have the finances right now, am I correct? Because we did talk about bringing back vocational, but I mean, I know there's a state initiative to it, too, because I asked to be on that committee and unfortunately it wasn't picked. But I haven't heard the update from that committee yet either.
Maybe Mrs. Pecos can answer this, but I know that we have some shared time programs at the high school. So, you know, we are addressing it for sure at the high school level and certainly with the new middle school schedule. A lot of the electives are more hands-on maker, you know, to me, which kind of falls into vocational.
Career exploration, business management, personal finance.
So to me, that's exploring vocational education. And of course, the halftime, the shared time programs that we have already with the high schools, I think, you know, of course, there's always room to improve, but we are having some budget issues right now.
Yeah, I thought John was looking back at what we got to discuss once before.
Yeah, it wasn't really about execution of it, it was just sort of thinking about what we'd like to have. Finance, we haven't really gotten a certain piece of data we don't have yet, but in terms of what we'd like to do, ideas that other districts are doing in other places, I know there's coming up, that focus on college prep, you know, we, Little Town's having a very good, very good vocational, I use the word vocational, whatever the.
Career readiness.
Career readiness. We know where people had, you know, actually meaningful internships, I think, actually Jim had said he had informed that program even less. You know, thinking about those things, we get them tracked to not only, you know, the battle shop, but to actually go with businesses where they get internships and maybe use some of their time to go and maybe, you know, head towards a treatment.
Right, that's kind of like that, the program at the high school. One other thing I want to mention, and a lot of school districts, and something that we did talk about here at Middletown, the idea of turning media centers into maker spaces. It's quite costly, but they have laser cutters and 3D printers and, you know, all kinds of hands-on exploration, but it also, right now, is super expensive and something you can't afford to look at.
I like the shell out, though.
Yeah. I agree with John, and I think that Robin brings up is a good point because as the students came up earlier, you know, and Mr. Suak put out there, you know, there's a shortage of coders, computer scientists, and those are, you know, you could always say that those are the trades of the next 20 to 50 years, you know. So less people swinging hammers, more people know how to use computers, you know, there's computer in your air conditioning, there's computer in your car, you know, so they need that. Not just the hands-on, like physical making stuff, but also coding, technology, understanding logic, things like that. So what we do, not only for the strategic plan, I guess, you know, maybe something for the curriculum committee to consider would be how to have an integrated ball of that. And then doesn't Port Dale have like the next few steps of that? So you learn, you get the basics here, and then you go to Port Dale where they do have that advanced, you know, technology for like onboarding and ATR and stuff like that.
That's cool. I think that's also in freehold, because I'd have a big vocational standard.
That's part of the county vocational program.
Okay, so I'll jump in there now. So I think, you know, when we look at our budgets and what we can do, there's two different things that we're talking about. Career readiness skills as it relates to current curriculum and, and, and we're, we're doing that through our pathway program, right? And we, we have, we're addressing those through the pathway program. As it relates to trades-based vocational programs for us to duplicate the services that we can get from the county vocational system with everything from culinary arts to electrical to HVAC, to.
What, what?
Yeah, all things, exactly as it relates to, to the trades-based education. We, we, it has never been our recommendation to duplicate those services that have already been provided for us by the county. And we've developed strong relationships in both high schools with those county vocational programs. And there are other programs that we didn't even mention on top of that. I know that my wife, my wife just got her hair cut the other day in Middletown. A lot of graduate from the Middletown public schools who went through that trade-based program, which that's at hazard right in front of Raritan High School, which happens to be John's daughter. So, I mean, there's, you know, certainly there's really strong, well-developed programs and not only the resources to duplicate those programs, but the facilities to duplicate those programs go beyond our budget. So, you know, just to be realistic, I think that's.
I think to add to what Robin said, I know when we went to school boards, I don't know if you guys got to go there, they had this STEM center. A lot of that is done in the maker spaces that some of the schools have. And I think in order to get them, a lot of the schools went to referendums to turn those spaces in, but they have a lot of the trades in that. And the things like, the things that those kids built and the way they explained how they did it at this session was amazing. You know, what they can do and what they can reach through these classes.
That's already being included in our schools and a lot of the evidence that we're talking about where we are in the future. As a matter of fact, part of our design for the, you know, redoing the media center of high schools, as you know, including those maker space areas. But as, as you already stated, you know, there's an expense to that and it's ever changing.
Because we have to change all the ventilation, there's a lot.
A lot to, a lot of expense.
That's why a lot of them went to referendums to do that because it's very, very expensive, structural changes.
But, but it's a trend that you're going to see more and more of.
Well, we, you know, we have stored information and just get information for discussion purposes. We have had our architect look at our spaces and give us some feedback on what would be necessary and some real drop budget costs. So it's not that that hasn't been considered, you know.
No, we have.
You know, it's going to become a matter of our, to base our resources.
I assume Mrs. Oldness, as we had the presentation last week, just because I know there's a couple of people in the audience who are here probably to talk about it. Do you want to give an overview of maybe addressing some of the concerns about the new experience of them?
Yes, probably.
How about someone moving in?
Kim, do you want to lead that discussion?
So we have communicated with some parents who have asked for more information regarding the program, both perhaps because they have students who they believe this may be an option for, and they were wondering how they can go about putting into that as an option. As we stated last week, or this is two weeks ago almost now, a week and a half ago, this is a regular education magnet program, just like our ESL magnet program, which is funded through regular education and follows regular education curriculum. This is for kindergarten students who for a multitude of reasons may have had either a lack of prior schooling experience or other more sensitive family issues that I don't want to get into too much because I don't want to weigh into other people's private business, or just a general, maybe a delay in developmental, social, social, emotional skills that they're experiencing a tough time transitioning into a kindergarten program. That's usually because they have, they lack, there's a gap in their experience with being in a school setting with demands being placed on them for the first time. So the idea coming out of our INRS committees in our 12 elementary schools and hearing that they're experiencing these kinds of situations where a student may not have an organic need that would justify perhaps a special education program or something of that nature, but perhaps one where it is again more social, emotional, and there's need to fill a gap in those social, emotional skills that are required, you know, and necessary to be successful in a classroom environment and to really help them learn how to self-regulate their feelings, their emotions, things that typically are learned either through a structured preschool experience or by participating in recreational activities like, you know, peanut soccer, those kinds of things.
Having older siblings.
Having older siblings, exactly. So we have been working with a group of principals and SBSSs and the, we actually invited supervisors, we asked, not invited, but we included supervisors from special education because we thought that they could lend expertise in the, because one of them especially oversees the preschool program. And we were looking at this as really a void in preschool experience for the most part. So we were wondering how we could fill, you know, backfill that void for some of these students. And we have curriculum directors also involved in this committee. And it really would go through the INRS process. A student would be identified either by their, like any general education identification occurs, either through the parent suggesting that they're witnessing or experiencing difficulty in helping their child transition into a formal kindergarten experience, or the teacher asking the INRS committee to give them suggestions for how to help support a student who may be experiencing some difficulties. So the INRS committee in each school would meet and there obviously would be a period in time in which data would be collected, interventions we would put in place in that first, that first classroom environment, and you would look to see is the student making progress. Because just because maybe I lacked, if it was me, preschool experience, doesn't necessarily mean that I may not be successful in kindergarten. Just because I may be young for my age, doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to have a difficult time in kindergarten. Just because my parents, my family may have experienced some sort of traumatic situation like homelessness or displacement, doesn't mean I'm going to be, and I'm just using that as an example, not successful in kindergarten. But sometimes when multiple factors come together, it places a hardship on the child to be successful, or there is this now inherent gap in their social, emotional skill sets. So we look to backfill that to, that the student can be ready to learn and be available to learn in a productive way. So just like we do our ESL magnet program and at the high school level, we do like an arts academy magnet program where we pull students from different, you know, schools across the district to provide direct instruction that usually is incidentally or sometimes purposefully given in our kindergarten settings when developmentally appropriate. But again, these are students who, there's a gap, you know, existing right now for them, so we're trying to close it. So the idea was that we were not going to return to what many districts, including Middletown and Manalapan, where I previously worked 10 years ago, where we had like an extra year of school, it used to be called like a transition kindergarten or a transition first grade, and you basically, instead of doing 13 years of school, K through 12, we did 14. We were not intending to do that because research has shown over the last 10 years that those types of programs didn't necessarily close the intended gaps or result in the positive outcomes you were hoping for. So we would follow the traditional kindergarten standards, but make modifications, you know, like we would do for any student when exhibited need occurs to the delivery or the way in which the standards are delivered so that there is intent, and of course, most purposefully, include intentional direct modeling and teaching of social, emotional skills and self-regulation. And things like, and I'll quantify social, emotional, so turn-taking, sharing, how to make friends, how to deal with when I've had a demand placed upon me and I don't know, I'm not happy with that and I don't know how to respond. So that is the type of curriculum that we were looking, or activities and modeling and instructional supports we were looking to put in place in this program. We, at this point, the committee, it is new. We are trying to be forthcoming and transparent in, in our process of this. We have identified, we have created a lot of materials to help us accurately identify the right types of students for these programs because it's not for everyone. You know, we certainly wouldn't want to delay a student who has more of an organic need or a need that would allow them or it would be more appropriate to provide a special education intervention. We wouldn't want to delay that if that was the case. So we have to be very thoughtful and about the data that we collect and analyzing that and working with the parents and the INRS committee to identify if this is an appropriate placement for that child.
For voluntary.
Voluntary, yes. The parents would agree, just like they do for our ESL program or any other magnet program we offer in the district, too, for their child to be part of that program.
Thank you.
Under new business?
I just have, I just have one thing. I just, I wanted to thank the board and administration. So I attended school boards and it was a very blinding experience. It was sort of overwhelming to meet, you know, administrators and school members across the state. And I think that Middletown represented itself very well, as Dr. Dora mentioned. And we were honored with the Future Ready Schools Silver Level Award, which was amazing. The, the focus of Future Ready is all around that STEM part. And we were also well represented for it in the arts part with Mr. Corey and Mr. Bevers presenting their documentary, their student film. So the students in the Middletown South Film Class, they, over the course of what, a year and a half, put together a documentary called Sonic Hidways, which is a three-part sort of dive into the history of live music performing in Middletown. So it went all the way back to Stevie Van Zandt, Bruce Springsteen, and some of the quote vocal legends and the, I call it Blue Club that used to be where Union Square Plaza is now. And it went all the way through.
3000 Beach Club?
Right. And it went all the way through the current, you know, Brookdale Public Radio, which is here in Middletown, as well as some of the exploits of the Middletown South Basketball Pep Band. And it really just explored the history of music over the past, you know, 50, 60 years. So that was very well received.
So professional.
They did, they did an amazing job and I thought it was interesting. I thought they were very complimentary to see the district honor on the technology side and then to see the arts come right through and wave their hands and say, nope, this is really going to be Steve, as Steve Van Zandt had said. So I'm just very proud of our district. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be there.
I'd like to jump on that a little bit, too, because not only what we presented by the filmmaking, but we also had some of our Future Ready teachers that are presenting and teaching at Future Ready Center. So it seemed like there were Middletown staff almost all over that convention this year. And it was really proud to see when they presented us with the silver award, it took two slides to present Middletown. You know, I mean, there were slides with one or two things on there. We had all 17 schools and people were amazed watching our teachers present, Mr. Bears and Mr. Corey. There were other students there from other districts wondering and asking them, how did you get this far? How did you do this? How did you get this class in your, your district? It was really nice to see people surrounding Middletown to take advantage of what we offer and what our kids actually can do and our teachers can teach.
Teacher, Mrs. Hessler.
Yeah.
Wendy Brown.
Alice, Dan Austin, you know, they're all there and it was very impressive. So Middletown definitely put quite a few stars on the school boards. So Middletown definitely put quite a few stars on the school boards convention and it was well, well worth them all going down there. And it was really exciting for us to see our district spotlighted, you know, for all the good things that our staff and our students are doing. The other thing is under new business, we're having a student services meeting on November the 12th Monday night and our insurance company will be there. And I know that some board members have indicated they'd like to be there. So if you plan to be there, please let me know by Friday so that Amy could sunshine the student services meeting for the, at least for the legal part. Because I know we talked about the last week, some board members said that they wanted to come when the lawyers were there. So I want to give them that opportunity. It is at six o'clock. Six o'clock. Now, I have the insurance company and our lawyers for special education. Yeah. They're coming to student services. Did I say insurance?
Insurance.
Sorry. No, insurance lawyers. I'm thinking insurance because that's the next thing.
We do say lawyers too.
Because our insurance company is coming to one of our other facilities. So yeah, our lawyers for special ed. We haven't met with them in a couple of years. It's a good opportunity for us to sit down, talk to them and ask questions and for them to update us on their part. So.
Eric Castle up on that.
That's what I said, by Friday morning. Correct. If I don't hear from people by Friday morning, then Amy's not going to sunshine it. But if I hear from you, we will sunshine it. Okay? Because we don't want to leave anybody out of that. Also, I just want to, you know, say to the public, don't forget all the things that are going on in our district this month. November's a short month, but it's a busy month. There's a lot of things going on in our schools. There's a lot of athletic competitions going on out there like we heard before. Tomorrow night is North-South Field Hockey in a championship against each other. That should be a great thing. Our soccer teams, our football teams are doing great. Our academic clubs are meeting and they're succeeding in their competitions. So, you know, keep an eye on the website or your school pages and try to attend and support our students in these events. Anybody else new business? Okay. Do you know other new business? I'm going to open it up to the public for a 30-minute opportunity to speak on any item.
Hi, everyone. Alan Melton, 42 Level Valley. Back again. Welcome. So, yes, so my comments are tonight are from the Middletown Foundation for the Learners, which is the district special education advisory council. And so our comments are regarding the integrated kindergarten pilot program. First of all, we'd like to commend the district for identifying this need and being so responsive and proactive about it. We're, that's really awesome and says a lot about the motivation of our administrators. So thank you so much for doing that. Our comments are really around the process and the program and the research that supports it. So our major concern is basically that students are being moved from their home school into a specialized classroom and that it's being done so quickly. So our concern is really, it makes us wonder, is the tier intervention model robust enough? Is there a way that we can put them in a place within their home schools? Because when you factor moving a child after two months into a different program and trying to move them back, you wonder is there going to be some negative consequence to that? So that's, that's one area of concern. I realize we only have three minutes and we're not going to get all the answers, but like the Dr. Heather Saper, I put together a letter and hopefully maybe we can get some answers later that way. So that is one area of concern for us. Also, the other area of concern is can a tier three intervention be done in the home school? And is that a choice? Is that going to be a choice for parents? We'd like to understand how in light of the inclusion, the inclusion research, where this fits in? Because our understanding is that inclusion is the best practice. And so we'd like to understand how does this fit in? And if there are other examples of model programs and work, if there's data or what the literature says about it? Because again, this is a vulnerable population. We just want to make sure that we're going to go through all these measures that they, that we're making some really good educated decisions. And then lastly, I think you addressed this, Mrs. Peggus, is will this still respect the identification process? Because possibly there will be students that even after this type of intensive program are not responding to a tier three intervention. So we just want to make sure that at that point, that parents and teachers will still be able to refer and that there's going to be no delay in these children becoming identified. Because as you know, many mental health issues may not present as academic necessarily. So that is an area of concern for us. So that's kind of it. I'm trying to remember if it's three minutes, but I do have these letters and we can pass these around and hopefully we can. I don't know if there's anything that we can get responses to now or if maybe at a later date you can do responses.
Yeah, I think we're collectively, we'll review your request and then we'll take it to our next meeting. When is our next, off top?
Later.
Whenever our next meeting has, we'll take that and we'll give the appropriate answers to that.
And I apologize for being out of process typically that route that we go. And, you know, and I understand that this is an administrative decision. We just want to have a little more information that'll help us also in our parents when they come to us and understand all the offerings in the district and, you know, help them make the best decision for their kids.
Thank you, Ms. Peggus.
Thank you.
Jonathan, next, I'm sorry, I also have some data from town parents. I'm sorry. I said the wrong thing. I have comments to kind of follow because I also had some concerns and I've broken down some of the commitments regarding the program that you have suggested. While I admire all the women on the committee and I have the opportunity to work with them, I do have some concerns regarding the solution. As a therapist that works with young children and I have my master's in education, I have studied some of the issues that these children face. And the difficult behaviors described in the presentation can be attributed to multiple factors that influence child development, including ADHD, including, you know, home environment, those factors kind of cause it. But I think we need to consider the harm of taking the child out of that home environment. When you start to look at attachment theory, which should be considered in this situation, I've also provided some resources on attachment theory in the classroom environment and published articles that kind of identify that removing a child from the classroom can in fact lead to oppositional disorders, can lead to cognitive disorder, can actually harm the child's development as opposed to helping to develop those emotional regulation skills that are essential for the child's moving forward. The significance of the school environment cannot be underscored because the school environment may be the only safety that child needs. It's a structure the child needs, somewhere to feel safe, somewhere to feel valued. When you pull that child out after two months and try and form relationships and you put them in a different location for the children who are having the same difficulties with communicating, socializing, interacting appropriately with peers, you're sending them a message. The idea of providing an environment that's less demanding, less structured is brilliant. It's wonderful. Like, and it's exactly what kindergarten should be. But, you know, you're saying that the curriculum can be, you know, followed in this different environment for the kids. Why can't you provide that environment for all of our kindergarten children? Why can't we look at reducing the structure or reducing the demands on the kindergartens that are in place right now? There's programs that are being developed in other schools known as attachment aware programs. And there are school-wide programs that follow kind of like the PDIS program model that really embrace these children. They give them that home. They give them that sense of belonging. When you take on these kids and you kind of greet them at the door and you say, you know, we want you here and this is your job and this is what you're doing. This is where, how you're going to meet these kids. You're not going to meet them by putting them in a class with 15 other kids who are struggling with the same issues. So I do think it's a great idea. I'm so happy that you're identifying it. I work with these kids. I see it happening. I see where they struggle. I just, I'm really concerned that how you're identifying, how you're addressing it might be a little more harmful than good. So I did consult and get some resources.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Here at Massey Key, 22, I show a drawing of Middletown. Before I talk, I just want to make sure that I understand because maybe use, I guess, use the ESL comparison. And as I understand with ESL, that was more a consolidation of your services. You brought children of ESL into a general ed setting so that you didn't have your services going to 12 different schools, for example. They were not segregated into a separate ESL class, 10 to 12 kids, correct?
They are brought to identified magnet schools where the ESL services are provided.
Correct, in a general ed setting.
Ma'am, can we just respectfully have you stand here and question if I was going to board?
I just want to make sure we're comparing apples to apples because as I understood, because I listened very closely to the ESL discussion and I was very impressed because one of the things that Dr. Peggus said is that the research shows that embedding construction in the classroom is the way to go. And I just want to make sure that we're comparing things likewise because I think we're talking about two separate things. Many of you know this is probably an emotional topic for me as it relates to removing people, children from their home schools. And I'm worried about culturally what we're saying. I'm worried about what we're saying to the other kids that we're saying if you're different, if you don't behave or you don't make the grade, you're gone. I, I'm not quite sure why this is not a board decision. So I guess that's one of my questions. Why is the removal of children from their existing programs, setting up a completely new program and pilot, not a board votable decision? So that's one question. The other question was the ESL comparison. I'm just making sure I'm getting them down. I would also be very curious on making sure that we see a documented policy for this removal, the level of RTI, parent contact involvement. And I'd also, most importantly, and I would hope that the board would like to see also, although the discussion talked about the importance of social and emotional wellbeing to advancement and doing better in academics. I didn't hear any discussion about research or data that shows that these segregated classrooms work and I would like to see that research that supports this pilot where we're placing these children. I'm probably one of the parents that has a typical child that might have been targeted because kindergarten was not a great year for him. And, and I, I think we all, one of my daughter's best friends, we constantly laugh that she cried from kindergarten to second grade every day when she went to school. And she's now graduating from high school. I'm doing fine. I know there are big issues out there and I'm so glad you guys are looking at it. I am just so, so worried. It just seems like everything. I mean, if you're gifted and talented, you might be pulled out. If you're, we really need to embed these instructions on the social and emotional as well as academics into the classroom because it will benefit so many kids, not just these 10 to 12 that you're identifying. So I would, I'm very happy that you are looking at this, but I would encourage you to look at a different approach. Thank you.
Sue Griffin, One Hall of Fame. I'm just going to piggyback on the kindergarten thing first, but there are some requests also. As far as the kindergarten goes, I understand and I applaud the steps that you're taking to help these struggling children. The one thing I would ask, is there any way that we can identify this children earlier? So if it doesn't get to this. And my suggestion would be to do it through shared services, if all possible, to promote our preschool program, to work with the town to identify the children and the families that are at risk so that we can get them involved in the services program. Many times we focus on shared services on facilities and fields and tangible things. Maybe it's time to search that focus to the people, the students and the children. So that's my two cents there. My other question is about the separate question that's on about. Was anything mentioned at school boards that, I'm a little confused as to, doesn't even discuss of anything that we want to? Okay. Because my question would be, you know, 500 million for a lot of money for a separate question. And I know we're supposed to go for school security, water safety, expanding the programs for community college and vocational schools. Just wondering if there was any information as to how that 500 million would be passed along to the school districts.
I was, I was in one session where that was touched upon, but really touched upon more, less on the school's security side and more along the allocation because educational education was brought into it, so there's divided schools. And the discussion was how do districts get their hands on some of that money and not have it all go to the 21 county educational district? So, but it was a short session. There were really no solutions, you know, talked about. It was more or less an awareness thing to say this is one sort of thing for the district to think about. Like, think about the question. There wasn't.
There's no formula as to how this is going to be handed out or?
No presentation from school boards that I saw.
Boarding Commission of Education or any of the detailed stuff like that. Fortunately, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you very much.
Hi, everybody. Rachel Knapper, two kids at Thompson, one at Natsom. I have a couple of random things. It's all kind of just in relation to what was discussed. I didn't come here with anything I was planning on talking about, so I'll try to go quickly and stay to the limit. And I know I do have questions and I know I'm supposed to state my comments and then ask the questions, so I will try to do that. The first thing, I was just thinking, when you were talking about, there's so many things we'd love to do. We have to deal with now state aid cuts, but there's always going to be a money issue. I don't even know if this is legal, but is there a way to kind of package up what we would love to do in the district and put it out to the community and say, hey, are there any business sponsors who'd like to take this on? You know, it can be the Dairy Queen, Media Center at North, whatever. But I feel like there's an opportunity that we're local businesses. We try to reward them. We involve them in the community. They're obviously a part of our everyday lives. I think there might be an opportunity to connect them to the schools in this way. And obviously the dollar amounts would matter. But if there's kind of like a Chinese menu of things that we would love to do in the schools and you put a dollar around next to them, would we be able to go out into the community and encourage the parents to then go to these businesses and say, hey, can you help me do this at my kid's school? Your name would be on it. It would be promoted. It would be kind of a nice marrying, I think, of the district or the community. And at the end of the day, the kids would benefit. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a potential way to maybe bridge some of these finance gaps that we're running into. That was the one that didn't really have a question. Everything else is a question. This one should be quick. Nick, the documentary that you mentioned, is that available for the people to see?
It is not yet.
Okay.
But it will be soon. I believe they'll come out in November, right?
Right. They're hoping to put it out on YouTube.
Perfect. Okay.
And to do a, right, they were going to do like either at the Middletown Arts Center or there was a couple other big bears I mentioned.
Other big facilities.
State Two, Morecom, coming out of the south as to where they were going to do like a.
A premiere?
Yes.
There you go, yeah. Screaming, okay, awesome. No, I think that's an amazing thing to hear about.
Help us, yes.
And I think it would be awesome to kind of stream that over the rooftops and really kind of toot a horn on that one. And I know I talked last time about the idea of having a newsletter or something that gets pushed out to the parents. This would be a perfect thing. I mean, the Future Ready stuff, the Google internship presentation with the photos, that's amazing. Like wish more parents knew that stuff was going on. So I'm just, I'm happy to hear it's happening and I'm happy to hear it'll get pushed out.
And, and please help us by letting everyone know that, I don't know anyone else, who actually videos and films and puts on the website all their meetings and we actually very purposefully separate those presentations so the public can see.
Yes, no, and I am, I've been kind of delving a little more into what is available to the public by way of governing body meetings and I'm very happy that you guys do what you do because not many of our surrounding towns do it either at the board level or at the kind of township committee governing body level. So it's very appreciated by the public, thank you. This is just another quick question. I just want to make sure I understand to be able to relate back to the not home parents. The, for the kindergarten pilot, would parent permission be required? Yes. So that no kid would be put into this program unless the parent fully agreed?
It's voluntary, it's not a change in program.
Entirely, okay. Got it. And then, this is, this is kind of the biggest one that I wanted to come up with. I know many of you were there because I saw you at both the township committee meet the candidates night and also the board of ed meet the candidates night. And I think one of the things that I heard kind of universally with every candidate's response was the importance of shared services between the township and the district. And as a taxpayer, obviously, I want you guys working as closely as possible because it's, my dollar goes further. I know that there have been some logistical issues with getting the shared services folks from the board of ed and township together. Obviously, you're all volunteers, you guys are doing this outside of your nine to fives and your other lives and I think, I don't know if the public fully realizes and appreciates that, but I do. I was just wondering if there are other opportunities for the township, and maybe it's already happening, I guess that's what I'm asking is, is there, are there more meetings happening between the district and the administration, like township administrator, Mr. Mark Contante and his folks that are happening during the normal work weeks, work week, quote unquote, without the board and the township committee men and women present? Or is this entirely happening only at the governing body level?
Yes, we do regularly communicate with the appropriate administrators at the township between the different administrators with the board and the township on day-to-day issues and things that would not rise to the level of like the official meetings.
Okay.
Yes.
Good, okay. And then kind of the bigger though, like we should be doing this, what could else we be doing that's kind of reserved for the other folks? Okay. So I want to make sure. Again, I know what it means, like beating a dead horse. Nobody says, hey, we really shouldn't do shared services.
Security and police is really an example.
Yeah. No, that one I knew about specifically with, with Mr. Require and I knew all that stuff.
Oh, Mr. Mark Contante and Amy, you know.
Good. Okay.
We collaborate on some, some of these things, we collaborate on some other operational things, communication items, I mean, there's pretty regular communications.
Okay.
We've worked together many times on that.
Okay, good. Now, and I think, again, I know everybody has been saying this, but I know it's, you guys are probably wanting to beat your head against the wall because I know everybody wants to work more together and I'm sure the township committee wants to work more with the board of ed. It just seems like sitting as a taxpayer and hearing both sides and being like, well, I can't dots just be connected, why can't the hands be connected? It's a little bit frustrating. So I just, I know it's, it's sometimes difficult, but I encourage you guys to keep trying because I think at the end of the day, the kids and the taxpayers benefit the most. And then my one last thing, and I'm assuming I know the answer, but I'd ask anyway. Does the district have a recommended response to voters for the question on the ballot regarding funding, five hundred million?
I don't know if that's appropriately worded.
No, okay. Got it, I'll, I'll. You said, man, I want to stop. Thank you all very much.
All right, seeing no one else at the mic, we're going to make a motion to adjourn.
Don't.
Ball favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.